Good morning, the allegiance. Like to be just to the planet of the United States of America. Into the ring, which is since one nation under God. It is as well with thirteen justices for all.
So thank you, Johnny, could I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Brian.
Here.
Alexis.
Here.
Russ.
Here.
Dustin.
Here.
John.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Will you see me?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
All second.
Brian I.
Lexi I.
Jonathan I.
Five.
Jeff I.
There it is. I will now open up the floor to those and comment on anything on the agenda for this evening if anyone would like to approach the council. So we've gotten ready, so we will go ahead and close the citizen's comment. Anyone have any questions on the consent agenda before we get a motion to approve? And I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
Hi, Jeff.
Jonathan I.
Five.
Jeff I.
Okay, there it is. Uh, next up, uh, person rec report, Stacy.
We went over most of this at the. The meeting, but you guys have any questions, and I. We've also got Mike Tucker on line two from Martin Gardner.
Okay.
No, that would wait until. Just in case they have a question.
Stacy, I know that we're we as far as the city rec center is putting together a basketball tournament in November. What's the date on that?
November fifteenth.
Team signed up yet?
No, um, so I think all the last two days, um, when I left, I think only four teams registered so far. Uh, I kind of roused my email, uh, but it haven't looked good. I think there's a couple more on there. Um, another email I received was from another basketball tournament for ours, um, saying they're struggling finding teams that might have to cancel. Um, so I'm not sure how that's gonna go, but, um, we have it up where most people, most sports, uh, Brian sent out emails to local, local teams to try and get people, so we're still trying, but.
I think it is a great idea.
Yep.
That we try to do this here. Talk some of the tournament directors that have ran tournaments through here, have to pay fees for the.
Yep.
Facility.
Yep.
They make a significant amount of money.
Yeah, absolutely.
Set some stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what our discussion was. So yeah, no, we're definitely, definitely trying, um, have many steps along the way. Ruffs lined up if we can get teams all the things, so on it just depends on the teams.
Kind of early, yeah.
Well, I think that was my, the context, I think that was what we said from the beginning was starting new, not, not having a lot of contacts when it comes to, you know, who to contact to get teams and that kind of stuff has been. Was my worry, so I'm hopeful, cautiously optimistic.
I know we can't run it for a two, two team tournament.
Yeah, well, our, our hope was six team divisions, like six is. Our hope was six in each division, uh, do four in each, each division, uh, but any less than four, I think it gets a little.
I thought you'd try to have something, cause like you said, there will, there will a lot of fear to your.
Even if it's like, yeah, even if it's less courts or even if it's, absolutely, absolutely, picking up what you're putting on.
Have you hired a tournament director? It sounds like John wants to step in.
Yeah, I think a good one.
I think, I think this, this, this is a.
Those words came out of my lungs.
Not, I was gonna say, not, not to bail you out, um, but I think that started at one is, is gonna be doable. It's if. Started a couple of months, like that's where I don't think it's feasible for us to do with the staff that we currently have, but I'm not worried about doing one.
You.
Uh, so. In that kind of a tail off to that, one of the things I debated doing was putting a pickleball team together, or pickleball team, putting a pickleball tournament together. Um, I am for sure doing, um, a league this year that I'm still working out details, but should have it out here. Uh, kinda dip my, my toes in the water, if you will, um, but I know the pickleball tournaments we've had here in the past, I don't know that they make as much money. Um, but super popular. I know I'd be more optimistic that we would get a bunch of teams, teams for something like that, so looking into that too.
Do we still get quite a few pickleball players after Dubuque kind of did their things down at Five Flags?
Hundred percent. Hundred percent, we get just many, if not more still, um, with that said, I heard Five Flags get, are getting a lot too, so I don't know, I think just maybe more people are. Yeah, no, it definitely, the numbers did not go down once that was announced or all of last year, we definitely still had. It wasn't uncommon for us to have all six courts go in in the mornings.
Fantastic.
Have you looked at, uh, doing volleyball tournaments at all?
I have, I have not, I was gonna say, I have not at this point, um, when we, so the first of every year is when I book tournaments for the next year. Um, so everything this year is, is booked, but yeah, no, so we start, decided to start with basketball and see, see from there. Uh, but yeah, I mean, that's definitely an option as well.
Anything else for Stacy? Thank you. Chief.
Yeah, you guys got my report, um, the one thing, uh, I can kind of let you in on is, uh, the lockdown evacuation drill at the school. It's a yearly thing that we do, this year is just the lockdown drill on land that we're gonna do. Um, uh, I think it's every other year where you actually do the evacuation, so they try to do like in the Westview School District every other year. So some schools do it one year, some for the other year, so it's not confusion for a bunch of schools, so we're on the opposite side where we just do lockdown. And school's well worded, I think I put it out to the parents and, you know, they get, get it out, so it's hopefully not as big of a issue for people. It's just a drill, just like a fire drill and tornado drill. Uh, other than that, um, just October with Halloween coming up, we got the trunk or treat event and. Waiting on that to come up, but you guys got, I mean, the ax on, we talked about that at the last meeting, so anything else you guys got for me?
Like your new report.
I'm sorry.
I like your new report.
Which one?
Department.
Yes, we've been doing that, uh, giving you guys this report, uh, I do it every quarter, it's, it's easier to get the numbers that way every quarter. Um, so yeah, August was the end of the quarter, so you got up to, I believe, August thirty first, says what's in there, I believe is what it is. So yeah, it kind of gives you an idea, uh, break down each apartment, everything, it just kind of breaks everything down, what calls and. Try to make it simpler for you guys to read, if you guys had any questions on it, but we try to make it as simple as possible.
What struck me was with the density of housing for some of the apartment complexes and relatively few calls. And then there's the one that has less density and a whole bunch of calls.
Right.
What kinds of things goes into the category where you say extra attention?
It depends, um, extra attention could be somebody calling in saying there's, they want extra attention on their apartment. Um, or there'd be, say there's some kind of a call or incident that takes place where they want police presence for the night. Um, you know, a certain night where, you know, they feel that some may erupt with something happening where they want just an extra attention or police presence at that time.
They're almost all at one place.
A lot of them.
Yeah. Yeah, this is helpful data.
Any else for the chief? Thank you, sir.
We're up, sir. Here, start out with any, any questions from any of the items on the report?
The twenty sixteen dump truck, is it gonna live for a while yet?
Gonna live, it's day by day, um, it's, it's, it's been, it's been a truck that we had issues with, um, yeah, it's, it's been a problem. But, uh, yeah, we just limp it along and, uh, do as we need and keep it on the road. But yeah, it's definitely, uh. Definitely a problem, so.
So you did move some beaver dams too?
Yeah, would, I mean, that was pretty much repetitive anytime we have.
Time it's built up.
If we have, uh, you know, a few, an hour or so to spare, yeah, we, uh, we do try to control it somewhat.
And we were talking last year about the. Compost site, I know that's not really what it is, but, uh, about the amount of labor it was taking to keep that cleaned up.
Sure.
How do we feel this year? Is it the same, more, less? How do you feel?
Uh.
I mean, I'm just, yeah, I know we don't. Brag anything.
I would have to say if I went back and tracked all time, it would be probably less labor intense this year.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I don't feel that it's getting abused near as bad as it has in the past. Um, I'm not sure. What's controlling that? I think a lot of it was, uh, misunderstanding by the contractors, contractors that were using. Um, I definitely think, you know, it's, it's, it's very, it's easier to identify those types of people than it is just, uh, you know, an out of town resident or whatever it may be. Some of them might be, um. The simple fact that it may be, it's a little more secluded, nobody knows where it's at, or something of the sort, cause I know different times I'll still catch people going down Camp Court.
Sure.
Back there by the, uh, mighty.
Putting and stuff.
So there's definitely a misunderstanding yet where it's actually at, so that could be some of the reason as well for some of the out of towners. Um.
You could.
Or maybe even people just come down.
Was that? Just keep open it. Just keep open it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if this structure is quite as easy, as easily to move, but, uh, yeah. Um, but I would say definitely less labor intense than what it has been in the past.
Yeah, I know we kind of really focused on that last, uh, last summer and fall, um, you know, debated whether we can keep it open.
Yep.
Um, so I wanted to feel, get a feel like, is it still worth keeping open? It sounds like we're gonna get taken care of.
Yeah, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dean, we talked last week about a couple citizens that had raised concern about the Thunder Valley area, the Iman fiber build out. You were, somebody was going over there to look.
Yep, so I was gonna touch on that, uh, after, uh, nobody else had any other questions. Um, I had reached out to, uh, Iman, uh, a couple different times, um, last week. And they stopped over on Friday to identify some of the areas that were, uh, of concern, and I called them back today again, um. Just so that he was aware of, so we're on the same page on, on.
Areas you were concerned about.
The areas that I was concerned on, and yes, there are some areas along the block top trail on Cox Springs Road, and they were the first ones that he said were definitely a concern. Um, so he is gonna have their subcontractor back in town on Friday, is what I was told by him today. And he said, he absolutely recognized all the areas, he said he spent a lot of time back here, walked all the backyards, um, all the right ways. And yes, he, he was well aware of a lot of the areas that were, uh, of concern. So. Just one other thing I wanted to mention, I already, uh, made Stacy aware of this, she's well aware, um, the, um, concession stand will be locked up the first of November, so as usual.
Standard.
Yep, pretty standard, um, November to April, so, um, if anybody's approached with any questions on that, that's the, uh, shutdown date. For the bathrooms out there. That's all I got.
Alright. Anything else for Dean? Okay. Next up, we have engineering, but I missed the note report.
No, nothing for Steve.
I don't really have a lot, I did want to mention that we do have open house for a new, uh, business in town. Uh, Goldpinch Wealth Management, this Thursday, ribbon cutting at five, open house from four to seven over here at, uh, College Square. So that's the second ribbon cutting with new business over in College Square in the last two weeks.
It's Piasta Square.
Piasta Square, thank you. That, I don't know, I don't know.
College.
It's, it's where John's apartment is. So just mentioning that, uh. I'd also invite you to enjoy pizza, beer, wine and cheese, if that, you know, is, makes it a little more interesting. Uh, other than that, I have something, if you want to have any questions with me. Great. Up, we have Jason White here from, uh, Greater Dubuque Development, to give us an update.
Oh, Susan. Hey, everybody, I'm Brian, your counsel, I do have copies. If anyone needs our copy of the dashboard, so I'm here for a singular purpose, maybe a plus one, of course, all said and done, but, um.
If you just wanna let us know, if you want us to go ahead and turn the page.
Okay, so no, no one wants to, okay.
You know me.
Yeah.
I'll make, but I like wanting to make notes on it, so yes.
Anybody else? No. Okay. So. As a reminder, um. One of the core responsibilities we have is Greater Dubuque Development is our existing business program called Info Action, which we've been running for twenty some years. Actually, my teammate Dan McDonald's been running twenty some years, so, um, I got to hone in on a little bit of that when I started a couple of years ago, so. He and I, uh, traverse, um, Dubuque County and the tri-state area and meet with over two hundred and fifty employers. And two hundred and fifty employers, you know, the question is sometimes is how do we decide who they are? Well, we generally, you know, get, you know, the, the high, a lot of the high, this is, this is a little bit arbitrary, but still high economic impact. Type companies, you know, your ma, our manufacturers, our distributors, our, um, uh, technology, um, or larger medical, uh. Organizations, higher education, uh, K through twelve, um, those are, we tend to, they show up on our list, so we meet with them every year or as often as they'll be with us. And we also meet with our board members too, so, um, which reminds me, I'm, I need to meet with you guys for your, you guys get to be included in our next years if you. Uh, oh, choose, please, so, so that comprises the two hundred and fifty five visits that you see, um. It represented in that dashboard, so one, one of the things that we did last, last year for the first time is it used to be just one report for two hundred and fifty or three hundred. Employers that we visit with, and we started to kind of look at, okay, what communities maybe have enough of a size? A sample size, I guess, if you will, of companies of critical mass that we may be able to glean some information that'd be helpful for you. As decision makers for your community, as leaders for your community, and we determined Piasta, Cascade and Dires will all have enough that would probably could glean enough good information. To do your own report and share, so that's, but this is representative of tonight. So Eppworth, for example, I think we do two or three visits in Eppworth, we won't be doing a dashboard for them because it'll be pretty clear who we're meeting with, so. A, a big part of this is to ensure confidentiality, but still provide meaningful info. So, so that's a little bit of an intro to this. Um, thank you for bringing that up, so I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna go, I'm gonna let you review this while I kind of have some summary points. Um, of what you're reviewing, and first off, again, um, we met with two hundred and fifty five businesses between July twenty, twenty twenty four. And June twenty twenty five, including sixteen, sixteen employers in Piasta that employ one thousand nine hundred and fifty people. Uh, the year before, dashboard that you reviewed a year ago had eighteen employers, so. Again, sometimes it's subject based on timing of the fiscal year and all that stuff. Um, but thirteen of the sixteen employers are in the manufacturing sector. During the time that we met with them, um, events such as a presidential election, tariffs and high interest rates occurred impacting perspectives of these folks. Depending on when we met with them and the mood, um, when they completed the survey, so that's always also important to note. Uh, how they answer one day might be different, how they answer another day, but we visit with them once during the course of the year. We noticed a, noticed a little downturn for companies from the standpoint of business levels, fifty six percent of the employers among that sixteen. Uh, said they had lower sales, uh, the last fiscal year. Uh, no businesses, however, and this is what we like to look at, um, in terms of how they're face bearing compared to their, compared to their competition. No businesses reported losing market share, so in fact, a quarter of, of those employers noted gaining new customers and market share. A large, um, majority, sixty three percent, plan to go on offense, uh, this year. And spend money to modernize and expand, so either physical expansion or as increasingly is the case, purchasing new equipment. A couple of the companies have previously received funding from the state of Iowa's manufacturing four point O, uh, program to. Create new technology, artificial intelligence, that nature. Half of the employers plan to add new jobs, net new jobs in the coming year. While the quality of the applicant pool and the job market is trending down according to the survey. Businesses report better scores and ratings with worker availability, stability and productivity. As for the city of Piasta, the ease of doing business score is up from the previous year. Whereas the county and state ratings are down. Uh, business value, quality of life, location and employee work ethic in Piasta. The things that the community is doing to invest in, say, the new park rally with, behind the heart and soul initiative are likely contributing, uh, to making a difference there. Uh, workforce availability in Piasta is a weakness and a barrier. Uh, some businesses believe that better transportation and bus connections would help draw more workers to Piasta.
Interesting. Yes. Didn't we try a couple of years ago, it might be longer than that, co-op with one of the bus. Yeah. Companies, and it wasn't used very well, correct? Correct. So is there anything that we can take from that that we can help?
Yes, that was my next sentence.
Yeah, I knew it.
You're good timing, good timing, which is the, uh, no, but there, there was an effort, I think a lot of times, this is going a little off script here, is that, um. A lot of times people say, well, let's employ, let's survey our employees and see how many people will ride the bus, and I don't, I wasn't there then, but I think that was part of it. Because if we find out how many people will want to ride the bus, we'll offer service and people will jump on the bus. And we have seen time and time again. That people might respond positively to bus service in the survey, but ultimately their circumstances change or their desires change and they do not get on the bus, and I think. The, uh, service then was well intentioned, but people didn't get on the bus, so, but there's a couple of things, one is the RTA, I think you guys are familiar there. They do provide some point to point transportation, um, I don't know if Piast is a part of that or not, no, or you're part of the, you're part of the jewel system?
No.
I don't know.
No.
But I would think the RTA would probably deliver, but I'm not sure how that works, the DMATs, you guys are more. But in terms of outside the Dubuque, RTA intended provides some level of point to point transportation. If you read in the paper, funding is a challenge, um, driver availability and recruitment is a challenge. There's also the, uh, Enterprise Van Pool, which ECI has made available, where, so a partnership with Enterprise, um. If a company has several people, for example, that need transportation needs, they can, um, come together, part of the van pool program through Enterprise. And ECI will pay for a third of that, a grant they have, and then the other two thirds are either shared to the employees' expenses. Or, um, a partnership with the employer, so University of Dubuque is an example of that, that's utilizing that program right now to get kids from campus to the flight school. At the airport, so this is a program we've been promoting, uh, we haven't had employers take this, um, to any great extent so far, but it is available, so that is another. Option, anyway, to bridge that workforce gap. Uh, businesses also note, uh, land for development is needed, obviously, we're all living and breathing that. Um, add this quality of housing for workforce, uh, both noted as barriers just behind, uh, workforce, uh, labor pool. Um, as for community priorities, housing and air service are at the top of the list among those options that were allowed to be weighed in upon. Um, tie per number one, the housing study that you guys all performed, uh, with ECI's assistance, uh, for the city of Piasta. Stated that, um, there is certainly a shortage of owner units that are affordable to households under the income of a hundred thousand dollars in Piasta. Um. When you look at the five two zero six eight zip code, there's a shortage of units that are affordable to households with income of seventy five thousand to a hundred forty nine thousand. Um, so strategies, policies or incentives that help developers bridge that financial gap to build or develop housing could be, especially for first time home buyers, could be advantageous. Um, obviously, the study had some recommendations for zoning, which you guys have been under, underway reviewing. Um, infrastructure and facility plans, which obviously you're looking at for accommodating future growth. And then middle housing such as duplexes, fourplexes, cottage courts, townhouses and live work rooms. Childcare is needed, childcare needed, um. Is needed and companies notes a need for continuing to put for the arts, entertainment and recreation. Uh, supporting in-home providers and those who want to expand, start facility care for young people. Uh, will assist the communities, uh, young families, so overall, Piasta shows up very well, but obviously. You guys are all in the business of looking ahead to the future and continuing to do as best for your community and, uh, know what it takes to not let up on that momentum, so. Well, that is, uh, a few bullets from the dashboard of twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, so happy to answer any questions.
I'm surprised to see that air force or air service shows up as a Piasta area concern, so.
There's a number of employers here that, um, do use air service.
Good.
Whether they use Dubuque Air Service is obviously our priority, may not be their priority, I hope it will be their priority, but. That's, uh, obviously a major initiative that we're focused on right now too. Which is a good reminder that we have vouchers. Which is a good reminder that we have vouchers, hundred dollar vouchers, the fly EDQ, ebook flights to the end of the month, round trip to Chicago. So. I, that's the plus one chainless plug. But it's for the community, though, right? So.
That's right.
Um, so yeah. Appreciate your time. Thanks for, those of you who have served and had worked the festival and not be returning to the council, and thanks those of you who will uh are running for another term. Appreciate the partnership.
Adam, you there?
I'm here. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Thanks for letting me go virtual tonight. I appreciate it. I don't think I would have made it on time, uh, which if you would have put me at the end, I probably could have, but. Um, thought I'd cover the renewal for this year. Overall, things look really good. Um, overall, the renewal is a two point one eight percent increase. And I won't uh go through all thirty-one pages, but I do recommend that um people review it, make sure that changes have been made. I do know that one department made some changes in reviewing this over the last week. We've requested for those changes to be made again. So just know a couple of items are going to be removed, which will be some savings. Um, and I calculated about four hundred and twenty-five dollars off of the total price of one thirty-eight, one eight-five. Okay, so you're going to see some savings come off of that. But going through the the first uh page of the premium summary, the property went up two percent. That's because we have a two percent inflation guard on our limits, meaning every year they're going to go up two percent. So the property renewal was flat, which is a great thing in this environment. We are not seeing property being flat very often. Liability went up nine percent. That's due to our budget being up. And then across the board, just small increases, um, you know, just a couple of percent here or there. The thing I do want to make a note of is the cyber liability. So in the past, ICAP wouldn't, has never offered a million dollars of coverage. This year they finally are. And so we gave them the opportunity to look at that. We did have coverage through CFC for a million dollars and last year is almost thirty-two hundred dollars. Moving to ICAP's million-dollar policy uh is going to cost us two thousand dollars. So I recommend moving forward with that policy versus the other one due to cost savings.
Adam, are the limits, the limits all same on on the cyber?
They are, yep.
And on that property, uh, it's a flat renewal. Have they did anything different on the deductible side of things?
No, all the deductibles remain the same as what they were last year. Yep, we still have the wind and hail deductible on a percentage basis. Um, but overall, that has all stayed the same. So no changes to the property from last year deductible wise. All all limits are remaining the same as well. Uh, so no changes to overall limits. Uh, again, renewals, apples to apples minus the cyber, you know, we're just removing the CFC and and putting in place ICAP's cyber policy. Other, yes.
Just one on cyber, so it's a quarter of a million dollar coverage limit. That's the same as we've had, and I I might ask the same question last year, but is that sufficient or is that the most we can get?
No, so we have, um, so ICAP in the past has always had a quarter million dollars built in.
Okay.
And so what we would do in the past is we would actually remove that policy and we would move forward with the CFC policy for a million dollars. Okay? Well, now, since ICAP's moving forward with two hundred and fifty thousand is the standard, we've increased that to that million-dollar limit.
Thanks, that makes sense.
Yeah, so if you're looking at the proposal, and I'm assuming you probably saw on like page three, it says quarter million dollars, contribution is six eleven. That's where we increased it to that million to be nineteen sixty-eight. Other questions? Again, throughout the whole poll, that that uh proposal, it'll break down every single thing that costs money from each property, each auto, each piece of equipment. So as you're going through that and if you have questions, concerns, um, Annette, Marcy have my contact information, most of you do as well. Don't hesitate. I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
So currently we have an excess policy of uh three million?
Yes.
So that's what you're getting at as far as limits?
Yeah, but I don't think the excess would cover cyber problem.
No, but then you're talking, you know, the general.
Other liability.
So I guess the question is, is that, do we feel comfortable with that much of a limit? You mean the insurance port get thirteen million dollar excess if you want to, but.
Yeah, and whoever's running the PowerPoint or the slideshow, page six breaks down all the opportunities to increase our cyber limit, or excuse me, not cyber limit, our excess limit, as you can see each layer what that costs. And roughly, um, and again, as you buy more, typically gets a little cheaper, but it's roughly about fourteen hundred, thirteen hundred dollars per layer. So every million you add on, it increased the cost by that amount. So if you were to add the excess plus our underlying limits of two million, if we had a major event happen, um, you would see five million dollars worth of coverage. Okay? That would be our liability, it'd be our auto liability, law enforcement, public officials as well.
I don't know what they have a catastrophic event, but.
I don't have any experience to know that it would be, should be something different. I mean, it's based on claims history.
On the potential claim.
Or potential.
If something we were, got in one of our employees was to injure someone else. It's, you know, we'll have five million dollars to pay out. Coverage, you know, is that enough?
Per claim.
You could do the thirteen million dollar excess, but you're, is it worth it?
It's per claim, right?
Yeah, that's a, that's a per claim on an aggregate limit, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that, I'm fine.
Adam, what are you seeing in other communities of similar size?
I think that five million is pretty average. You know, the hardest part is it it's really not a size thing, although it should be. What we see is what do I feel comfortable with? So I have some entities that are only buying two million dollars of excess and they are probably four times your size. I have some that are smaller and they're buying a five million excess. And it really comes down to, you know, what do you feel most comfortable with? You you don't want to be, and I heard the comment, you don't want to be insurance poor, which is absolutely right. You can buy thirteen million dollars on top of the two and you'd have fifteen million dollars. That would be excessive for the city of Piasta. However, if you had an incident in the past where one of your employees hit the school bus and killed twelve kids, you're going to wish you had a hundred million dollars, right? You can't predict the future to see what's going to happen. However, if you do hit the school bus and have twelve fatalities, we're probably going to have more issues than did we have enough excess limits.
So you're comfortable where we're at, which.
Comfortable where they're at. I mean, typically when I, in in my world, when a catastrophic event happens, the first thing the attorneys do is look at your deck of your policies, right? What what's your limits at critical for that? Now, if there's a catastrophic event like that. Challenging to buy enough to be able, but I feel comfortable with that.
And any expense exposure beyond this, it would hit the general fund, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So, you know, we're, we're still, we're self-insuring for anything beyond that.
Right.
I'm good.
Other questions for Adam at this time? And do we need to accept the proposal?
When you see ratified.
This is just for information only.
Okay.
Um, it renews November first, so it's basically just, if you want to take a voice, a voice for it, that probably would be a good idea.
Okay.
Um, but it's not anything that needs to be passed by resolution.
I'm in favor of it, right? Lexi?
Yes, hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Yes, Jim?
Yep.
Jeff? All right. All right, thanks, Adam.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
Uh, next up, uh, twenty twenty-five dash sixty-four resolution approving purchase of a tenant X four Rover twenty-inch autonomous floor scrubber with brain software for the Piasta community center.
Wow. That's a surprise.
The robots are coming.
Software, do you run it?
Yeah.
Is that a bit of a first?
Uh, so I think that this has been uh vetted up pretty well. I think everyone's on board. So if anybody doesn't have any questions, I would just uh uh look for a motion on this. I want to reiterate, this was still within the budget of of the flooring and.
Correct.
Yes.
There's still like, I want to say eighteen, nineteen thousand left as. With what we've had on the floor. Bit of a buffer. That's, that's what I'm saying.
All right, so I will entertain a motion. Thanks, John, for adding that in.
I'll make a motion to approve this floor scrubber.
I'll second.
Jeff.
Jeff.
Second, second.
Okay.
Yeah, in favor of the robot for the floors.
Hi.
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 Motion carries. Next up, then we have uh twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five resolution approving the pavilion plans is presented by Martin Gardner architecture for the Kelly Oaks Park Project. Uh, and you said Mike is on.
He is online.
If anyone's got any questions. Hi, Mike. Thank you for being online.
No problem.
Anyone have any questions for him at this time? So I do, thinking about this, I do have, I don't know what if the word is concern is, I don't want to overstate it, but the 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 light that'll be illuminating from within, from the need.
The ceiling?
Yeah, the ceiling. Are we, or was there any concern that it will cause issues with neighboring people?
It should not. Um, and also, uh, I've had discussions with the electrical engineer to uh put the lights that are on at night for that. Uh, they're dimmable, so that can be adjusted up or down to suit. You know, the idea is that it's just a very small glow to just to light it up a little bit. Doesn't light up any area, just the the panels on the building, but that isn't going to be um a dimmable light. So we can turn them up or down as you see fit.
Perfect.
We'll have parking lot lighting at some point as well, correct? Not in this plant, but we will.
Correct.
Yeah, I think it's right to ask the question, but we're in, we're in the city and we have streetlights and we have uh lights in front of our houses. And I don't think this is going to be any different than that. Hopefully, it's more elegant.
Any other questions? All right, I will need a motion to approve this resolution.
Make them to approve the pavilion plans.
I'll second.
Right, I.
Lexi.
Jeff tonight.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Next up, twenty twenty-five dash sixty-six resolution approving, what we just did?
Yeah, we were talking.
Uh, revenue, resolution setting public hearing for and then amending title uh seven traffic code, chapter seventy-one in regulation section seventy-one point eight, parking for certain purposes. We talked about this at the uh work session. The only thing that we changed on there is to make the words plural for city parking lots and parks. And the reason we did that is just for future development.
Right. I'll be happy to make this resolution. I'm just going to comment on this one and the next one. I thought we caught these earlier today. But the actual resolutions reading has a whereas statement related to water and sewer, and it needs, this one needs to be changed to parking. And the next one, I'll.
On D?
D and E, just the the actual language of the resolution at the Merrill sign needs to be edited.
Did you make the?
Make a motion for. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to set the public hearing for ordinance amending title seven traffic code, chapter seventy-one parking regulations.
I'll second.
Right, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Step, we have twenty twenty-five dash sixty-seven resolution setting public hearing for ordinance to amend title nine nuisance to define undeveloped lots and mowing requirements.
Sounds good.
Uh, to set the public hearing for October twenty-eighth as well. I'll make a motion to uh set the public hearing for this amendment title nine nuisance to define undeveloped lots and mowing requirements for October twenty-eighth.
I'll second.
Right, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have uh item twenty twenty-five dash sixty-eight resolution setting public hearing for ordinance to allow laying hands within the city of Piasta. We have received uh some letters concerning this. I'll read those into the record at this time. Shouldn't that be done in the the public hearing? That's.
Yep.
Yeah, public hearing. I'm asking. Yeah, I I I I agree. Um, but one of these discusses uh even moving forward at all with even a public hearing, but I don't. I have, I want to have a public.
I want to have a public hearing.
Yeah, I do, yes. We'll just hold that until the public hearing, read amendment to public hearing. So then we need a motion to uh approve the resolution to set the public hearing.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to set the public hearing for ordinance to allow laying hands within the city of Piasta for the twentieth of October.
I'll second.
Right, I.
Lexi.
Jeff tonight.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Next item, twenty twenty-five dash sixty-nine resolution approving application and agreement to perform work within state right-of-way and authorizing mayor to execute documents associated uh therewith. This is the, we do this every year with the snowmobile club. So this is just repeating that.
As far as I'm concerned, nothing's changed on it, from what I know of it, so whatever.
You're good with it? Never had any issues, have you?
We've never had any issues.
I think they only got a call about one time last year. And it was mostly mine.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to uh approve the red, the resolution approving application and agreement to perform work. Documents associated.
I'll second.
Right, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Next up, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen ordinance amending the title six physical environment, chapter five utilities code of ordinances of the water and sewer raids second reading.
That dashboard up and running yet?
Yeah.
Yes, the calculator is fine.
Yes, it does.
Works really well. Have you had any comments about it or?
About calculator?
About anybody using it or?
We've had a couple of people come in, but they refused to have us return a call to explain anything to them. They come in to pay their bill and they complain and we've uh actually, Shanti is frontline. She's our gatekeeper. And she's had a couple of people come in and she's offered to say, Annette will call you, Marcy will call you, and they're like, no, we're good.
I mean, we've had it out there. I know we don't like to just say social media, but it's out on our social media. It's on our our website, it's been in the newsletter.
Multiple times.
So so we've, we've, I feel like we've worked really hard of getting the information out there. Uh, so if anyone has any questions, they certainly can read the information and then contact the city. Um, so I feel like we've done a really good job of getting that information out there and really going step by step with it. So I commend the city staff for doing that.
I agree. Thank you.
I want to reiterate, we all feel comfortable that we've looked at every avenue lost. looked at every avenue, exhausted every avenue of everything we have. Yeah, I think we've gotten right down to every detail on it, so. So I would need a motion to approve the second reading this evening.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of title six physical environments, chapter five utility code of ordinances for the city.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carries. Next up, we have item twenty twenty-five dash sixteen ordinance amending the zoning code of ordinance meadowscaping in the city of Piasta.
This too is the second.
Second reading of this one.
Have we gotten comments from anybody since the first reading? Have you guys gotten any comments from anybody since the first reading? Like, it's well good.
And again, I think we, yeah, I think we've had a great group of people who have come to us with very good information and making sure, again, I think I'll include myself that this isn't just a free for all, you just let your yard.
Yeah.
And and I think that's the the common conception is um that it's just, you can just do whatever, just it's, I don't have to model a yard, but it definitely isn't that. There's a plan, there is a cost to do anything. I think that's been laid up very well, and I appreciate uh your team for bringing that to our attention and and guiding us.
And a managed program with people that are overseeing.
Overseen, overseen.
Overseers. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of meadowscaping.
I'll second. Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carriers. Next up, we have uh the health spa by Vibe uh to discuss and discuss and decide our next steps to take. I think we've talked about this. Uh I think we we need to kind of come to an conclusion on where we're going to direct this uh discussion and uh the Alex, Steph are here tonight. I I guess where's every, I guess, give me, give me where everybody's at on this right now is is what I want to know.
I my couple of comments, I would like to do something, so do nothing's not an option in my mind. I'd like to work with these property owners that have added value to the community. I think the reality that it's inside Crossfix Development Agreement is the reality. So I don't like the idea of loaning from a different TIF district at a different time into here. I don't want to set that kind of precedent. But I'm open to the idea of when Crossfix Development Agreement is done, it's paying off faster. There will be TIF time left and we could work into a development agreement with the the Vibe property owners. That's kind of where my head is.
Lexi?
Yeah, that was the exact conversation that Brian and I had before we started our meeting, so I agree one hundred percent. I don't think doing nothing's an option.
Okay, Justin?
I would agree. I don't, I don't think we closed the door.
Okay.
At the time, so.
John? I agree. I think, like Justin said, I don't think we slammed the door shut to to, to point the direction of where where we should have went. So I think, yeah, I, doing nothing's, I don't know. Jeff?
I agree a hundred percent with that. I'm not comfortable taking the TIF money from another section, but I don't want to close the door on it.
Yeah, I I I know it doesn't, it doesn't assist with you immediately um in your situation, uh but I also concur that because we, your, our hands are tied with Crossfic already having the TIF money tied up. There really isn't a lot we could do at this time. Uh but everyone, I think, is on board and feeling like we are here to assist new companies and to try and drive this community to a better place. And so I believe that uh, you know, and it's it's going to take some time to get there, but we we will definitely uh be looking at trying to do something after the TIF has paid out to Crossfic. Again, I know it's not what you're looking for, but it's the best I think we can offer. Questions at all from you guys or?
Ideally, running some projective numbers with his agreement, maybe completing in five years. We, you're recommending we just sit idle for five years and and then come back to you? Or what, or what do we do in the meantime?
I think we should work on.
Yeah, I think you could.
I think this couple is good.
Yeah.
Have some sort of agreement wrote up with them.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
That way they got parallel.
That way you have a.
All those of us that were here and understand.
We need to get with Doug on that.
Yeah, it'd be bonding council as well.
We may not be able to put actual numbers in it. I don't know.
I don't think.
Can we project that out?
Can we hold a future council to any agreement?
I I've put together a spreadsheet with rough projections based on his property values currently and where I think the one point five will kind of come. So if you guys want a copy of that to to get an idea of 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 what the property values look like and.
I think it would be good if if you would send that, send that to Annette so that we can take a look at it and just, you know, get an idea of what what we're looking at and have some sort of idea, because because I think, like I said, everyone feels like, you know, that's, that's the way we can go as opposed to just saying, no, we can't do anything.
Yeah, and then um I'll I'll explain in an email, but you know, two, two of his properties, I think, were done. They're they're still on last year's, you know, tax table, and then two of them are currently being built at the moment, so you know, things are going to change in the next.
Sure.
Based off of his other property sizes for for those buildings.
Sure. I mean, so Annette, we we can or can't actually execute a gr- an agreement
I I think.
Before the end of the other one.
Right, I think what we can do is put something together that says, and good, you know, good faith, we'll move forward. But we can't do the projections, and I I understand, and you can send that information to me and I can share you with you what we've calculated through our municipal advisor, so that we're all on the same page.
I think communication is going to be real key as we move forward on this, so you know where we're at, we know where you're at.
Maybe it's some sort of a letter of intent or something that has
Yeah, and good faith.
Percentages or those kinds of things, estimated timeframe to start, you know, to be revisited, because we at least want to give future councils the benefit of the analysis and the work that we understand right now, what our intention is. Right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh who should I, should I address that uh spreadsheet to Adap?
Me, please.
Yes, and she can disseminate it from there.
Okay.
Anything else on that? Alright, well, I think we've come up with a plan of action there, so uh at this time, I'll open it up to citizen comment. Anyone who wants to approach and uh talk to the. Can I leave you out, somebody online or?
There's nobody else online.
Alright, we'll go ahead and uh close the citizen comment, and I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Brian, I.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John.
Jeff, I.
Motion carriers, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.